Mr. Waddington, followed by the judge.
God our Father, as we gather for this meeting, give us guidance and wisdom to make proper decisions. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Here.
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 Mr. Chair, we have to inform you of the minutes of our meeting on February 8th, 2016, in your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of the February 8th meeting in dispense of the formal reading.
There's been a motion at second discussion. A lot of objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. I turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of the issues of regular business on our of the long agenda tonight, please step to the microphone. I'd just know what your thoughts or questions are. Seeing no rush to the microphone, we will go on to the first presentation, or only presentation evening. Kyle Roth is here and Kathy Fromm from Studio Graphique to talk to us about the new seal that's being considered for the city and your work today. The floor is yours, folks.
Briefly before Kyle and Kathy get started, talk about the process that led to tonight's presentation when the bicentennial commission was created. One of the things that they talked about in their early meetings was the need for a graphic identity or logo for the bicentennial. And we talked with them, we have several members of the bicentennial commission that are in the audience tonight. And so what the city did is last year, at the advent of the bicentennial vision process, was created a small amount of resource to go to Kyle Roth design in order to look at that bicentennial commission so that the spirit of the vision that we were creating for the city was captured in that identity. We also asked Kyle to look for opportunities to revisit the city's seal as part of that revisioning process. And then Studio Graphique was hired at a later date utilizing ODOT funds that we were able to secure for wayfinding signage for the community. And they have a process by which before they plaster signs all over a community as part of their work, that they look at the identity of the community. So what we did is very early on in that, realized that we had a process in which Kyle was working and that which they were about to undertake. We asked those two to talk to each other. So Studio Graphique's work has been influenced by the graphic branding that Kyle has undertaken with the bicentennial commission. And then ultimately, Kyle's work has been able to take advantage of that sort of community identity process that Studio Graphique undertakes as part of all of their work in looking at signage, identity in the city of Sandusky. So with that, we'll turn it over to them.
We began this project several months ago and had several rounds of revision through the bicentennial mission as well. As you'll see through some of the work, we took on different routes and ended up in one direction for the bicentennial logo. And from there, went into seeing how we could use that same theme throughout going into the city's seal. So we started from the beginning, which, taking a look at the current city's seal, what all the elements are, and from there, we went in and tried to explore keeping things pretty similar. As you can see with the direction arrows, how we went through the initial process, trying to isolate items throughout the city that's in the current seal, using some of those same elements. And then venturing into maybe like the coal box view and then what you see in the middle there. And then also, the boy with the boot is very iconic of Sandusky. So from there, we went into a more iconic version, more conceptual, playing off the street grid, as you see over on the far right in the middle row. And that started to get too tapestry-like, a little bit more like the old logo, our seal. So from there, we simplified it and settled upon the Sandusky 2018 bicentennial. So from there, we finalized that logo after a couple more rounds of design changes. And we have a master logo and a secondary logo.
So here, we have two different uses for the logo. One with the Sandusky 2018 with the street grid embedded into the zero. And then the second one with the zero, more of a seal look with Sandusky 2018 within it. We felt that this kind of encapsulated what the city is about. Instead of calling out the county building or specific elements, boats and water, this kind of more unites the city, the neighborhoods. The street grid plays a good role with that. And the different shades of color as well. We feel the arrow upward, it sends a positive message as we're moving forward with the city. And some of this, you'll see file names listed at the bottom. That will be used in our branding materials, that will be used after we release all of this. So here's some more of the branding elements and how the logo is used for the bicentennial Fonts are displayed, are called out in spec so that everything remains consistent in printed materials as well as any kind of online media and those sorts of things. Develop a color palette to use along with the logo for different elements of the design. And here, we see where we go from here. These are some of the icons that are used throughout some of the master plan document that call out specific themes for destination, for the celebration, historic themes, neighborhoods, and waterfront. So then we went into looking at the city's seal and bringing in some of the elements that we built the bicentennial logo with, utilizing the logo in different formats, the black and white, the reverse logo, and then the full color version. And this is the city's seal that we are at right now. And with that, I'm going to pass the mic over to Kathy.
As Eric introduced, we have been working on a community wayfinding program for the city of Sandusky. And we had the opportunity to see some of the work that Kyle was doing as we move forward. But part of the process of the work that we do is to understand the story of the cities that we do sign programs for. So we are tasked to build a community profile, to understand who you are, who we're trying to speak to, what are the things that we're trying to highlight, and how are we going to put your best face forward to those that are trying to experience your city? So when we go about building what we call a branded community wayfinding program, we're looking to build a program that connects the audiences that seek a personal meeting with your city, that creates a strong and positive awareness of the unique lifestyle that you have here. So these sign programs aren't necessarily always for the visitor, they're for you as well, to signify the pride and the, in character that you have in your community. It also is here to hail on the history of your city so people can understand that story. And we spend careful attention to understand how this will grow with your city as you move forward. So one of the first exercises that we do is to understand the character traits of your city. Now, a lot of these character traits don't necessarily evoke a visual to you, but as designers, we need to understand what the feelings that we want people to have when they see not only a brand, but even the wayfinding program that's associated with your brand. So what we found with the city of Sandusky is the people of Sandusky are aware. They know what is going on, they are intent on supporting their community, and they want to make sure that things are done right. They are authentic. Your city is authentic. It has an authentic urban core, it has great parks, it has wonderful neighborhoods. There's an authentic feeling of community here, and we want to make sure that that is evocative of the sign program we develop. They're entrepreneurial, there's some experience here, and there's some opportunity here too. And again, this isn't a word that's necessarily there to evoke a visual, but we want the signs to have a little bit of a forward-looking style to them so people feel that this is a place, that they have opportunity. People here are loyal and passionate, and they are balanced as well. So these are things that we keep in the back of our mind as we're designing a graphic program that would be displayed in signage and wayfinding. We also want to understand your audience. And this is important, and I think this also speaks to some of the work that Kyle is doing as well. These sign programs, again, are not just for the visitor. These are for the residents. They're for the residents of Sandusky, and they're for those that come through Sandusky on a regular basis, those that have a relationship with the city. They may be from cities just outside of the area, more of the region, but we want them to know how special the things here in Sandusky are. The target audiences we're also looking for are entrepreneurs. We want them to know that something is happening here, and there's a place for them here. So again, the sign programs we design are to speak to that audience. Same with investors. You know, a sign program isn't just to say, this is what we have. They are here to help you understand what you could have. And we kind of keep that in mind as we're working. We want to be able to direct and have people understand that there are other opportunities here and they can be a part of it. And last but not least, the visitors are important here too. You have a very large visitor base. And we have to try to capture their attention as well so that they understand that there is a lot of things that can be done here in the city of Sandusky. We also look at what are what we call your distinct advantage or your high assets for the city. So we know a lot of the tangible things, a lot of your whats. You have the lake, and you have these great neighborhoods. And how can we create some very strong distinct advantages that set you apart? Because there's other communities, you know, around in this region that have the lake and have great neighborhoods. So how do we make Sandusky feel and look as special as they are? So what we're calling the lakeri lifestyle ties a lot of those things together. It speaks to the neighborhood, it speaks to the fact that you live near the lake, it speaks to the fact that you have such quick and easy access to the islands and other enjoyable factors that the lake has to offer. We also consider Sandusky to be progressively minded. Again, these are design terms that evoke perhaps a singular style that's going to help us build this program for you. But we want them to know that there is opportunities and things that are happening here. But we also know that you're established, and you have a really solid urban core. And that urban core happens to be attached to the lake, which is really spectacular and pretty special for this area. And last but not least, we also know there are roots here. And your history is important and authentic, and there are people that have been here for a long time, and they very much believe in the city. So we want to make sure that this sign program also represents those people as well. So right now, where we are in this process is we've gone through and we've done our analysis of the city, and how people navigate the city, and how we would want to move them through. So we have what we call our comprehensive sign plan completed, and we're beginning to work on programming. And this is where we attach messages to signs and locations. We've also moved in conceptual design, and using a lot of what we've learned from Kyle's design process, we're also taking that in consideration as we move forward. So what we're showing you is very highly conceptual. It has not been completely vetted yet, but we did want to show you how it can attach itself to some of the work that's being done here. So again, looking at the grid structure that Kyle has developed in the city's seal as well as the colors and the fact that it talks to the connected community, the colors evoke and speak to the water and your connection to the lake, as well as bringing in design elements that speak to the historic and authentic nature of your city. We're talking the limestone bases. These would be considered gateway signs into the city. And then aside from that, when you do a community wayfinding program, you need what we call a sign family. One sign doesn't fit all, and it doesn't do the same thing. So there's a variety of sign types that we would use, from when you're coming into the city, where you have size and scale, that's a factor, as well as once you move into the downtown area and how those signs change scales when you start to encounter larger buildings and structures. So that's it.
Thank you. I also wanted to suggest, very, very interesting, I would not have got any clue as to how you go about all that work and getting closer to your final recommendations. Mr. Wilks, could you give us a sense, and I want to ask the commission and the bicentennial commission to weigh in with any of their thoughts, could you give us a sense of what you anticipate coming up next with respect to the city's seal?
So the only piece of the...
...necessarily that would come before the city commission would be the adoption of the new seal mark itself. The bicentennial commission has already acted in the adoption of the bicentennial components of that. And any design of the wayfinding signage that you saw, that was really just more of inspiration. We're still working on that at the staff level. We have a lot of partners who are interested in potentially partnering that, we have to give feedback. So the next step would be, if the commission has comfort level with where the seal component is, staff would bring that before the commission at a future meeting, maybe as soon as the next meeting. So the direct feedback we need the most, the level of sort of control, the fact of any actions, probably, that the commissioner or the staff would take, we'll be making sure that there's a general comfort level with that seal. And we wanted you to see the bigger picture, not just the seal, so that the commission can understand how that fit into a much larger process than the bicentennial, the branding of the city, and then ultimately, the first sort of physical, publicly visible portion of that brand, which will be the signage itself. Does that make sense?
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Wilks. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lloyd.
I just want to say thank you so much to the bicentennial commission and all the time and effort you guys have put in, and to Kyle and Kathy, the presentation was great. I think this is the first time I've seen any of the gateway signs, and I'm excited. It looks really good. And when it comes to our city's seal, I love it. I think it's simple yet complex. I think that it's modern and updated, yet it still embraces our history. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I too appreciate and thank everyone's input into this. I really do like the thought that you put behind, like, the street grid, the colors, the water. I think all those things are important to acknowledge the history of the community and make sure that that's kept in mind moving forward. So thank you for the thought process that you put into that.
Further questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Cool.
Ms...
Yes.
The downtown sign, where it says downtown here, would you go back over the, whatever that geometrical thing is to the left? What was the materials you made that out of?
Oh, sure. Over on the side?
Yeah, what are those side panels? How are they constructed, and what do they do?
They're usually, it's, we're exploring right now the use of a resin material that would have, it would look like glass but would not be glass. So the resin is shatterproof and comfortable to use in the environment.
Okay. Where's the logo fit into all this?
We're not, that's the one thing I should explain. When we look at community wayfinding programs, our intent is not to take the logo and just plaster it on a sign. It's to use and evoke the elements from the logo so that you understand and feel that it is part of the identity of your city without just putting the logo on everything. So on the side there, the use of the street grid and the patterns and the colors would be how we would incorporate the identity.
And that's part of the branding guidelines as well. That's why we create a branding guidelines document, to follow some of those font choices and colors as you move into applied design with signage and other collateral.
Anything else, Ms. Cool? Anyone else? Are there any members of the bicentennial commission present who wish to speak to anything that we've discussed tonight in the presentation? I want to weigh in with Ms. Lloyd, and thank you for all the work that you've done. I know you guys spend hours and hours grinding through materials. You meet every month, you recently completed a retreat. We get all the minutes of those, and it's very interesting to see what work you're doing. And I think that I'm really appreciative of the fact that you guys are carrying that load, and we can focus on trying to keep up with Mr. Wilks.
As we are.
As you are.
Ms. Wilks, we're certainly enjoying the process. We've got a great bunch of people, and it's, we realize that there's quite a load of work ahead of us to get ready for the events of 2018, but we're looking forward to it and keeping the ball rolling. And I think we were all very happily surprised at the process of the logo evolution. And when we got to the end of the presentation, I think we were almost all, I think it was unanimous that we all agreed that the logo, as was described, was fresh and yet complex.
Well, I was admonished just before the meeting to make sure anyone who speaks steps up to the microphone, and I forgot to do that. So the audience understands the speaker, who you can't see because he's right underneath the camera, is Dr. Bill Siemens, who is the chairman of the bicentennial commission. We would welcome any other comments that anyone here might have. And at some point in time, Dr. Siemens, if you or other members of the commission want to come to the city commission sometime and give us maybe a little bit more of a report and request support for one thing or another, we would welcome that too. So I'll just leave that as an open invitation.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Cool.
Yeah, it has occurred to me. As we move forward in this process, this started out as a concept of you're doing a logo for the bicentennial. And it looks like it's kind of moving toward replacing the logo that we have. Hopefully, you know, at least for me, before this is done, if you don't want to speak now, that's fine. But I need to hear somebody else explain that logo to me so that as people come to the community and look at this new logo, what am I telling it means? I mean, you guys do this for a living, and it makes sense to you, but I'm the one that's going to have to live with, we, the citizens, live with this moving forward. And quite frankly, I'm just ignorant. It does not move me very much. I don't really care what the logo ever looks like, but I do want to be sure that this is something that the community actually understands at a base level. You folks who do this for a living, all that information you gave us about the reasoning and so forth, it sounded nice. At my level of functioning, it didn't do much. I understand the boy with the boot, and I understand the sailboat, and I understand the fish, and I understand what we have. And I can speak to that very easily to anybody that comes in and looks at our logo. So I would just, at some point, other citizens, please come explain to me how much you love this so that I can fall in line with you. But otherwise, yeah, thank you for your work, and it is progressive and forward-moving, and I'm just not. But that's okay.
Mr. Roth, I don't know if you want to take a crack at that now, or, I mean, I think Ms. Cool makes a very important point, that we all need to be conversant in the narrative that goes along with the seal. And I know you've explained it to me, and as, you know, being part based upon the Masonic emblem, part this patchwork quilt of what we have, of all sorts of different parts and pieces of our community, those being the different shades in that, and then...
Exactly.
...the water being reflected in there as well. You've explained those things to me.
Yes, it's more conceptual. And I think with being more conceptual, it allows multiple responses to what it is to you. To me, it encapsulates the entire city because it's not calling out, say, the boy with the boot, or boats. Not everybody boats, not everybody fishes. So this is the neighborhoods. These are where people live. It's all the citizens of Sandusky. And it's all encapsulated in the circle to bring unity. And the shades represent different races, different creeds, everything, and it's all within that structure. I think the Masonic grid just made sense to build it upon that with the two streets running to the north, forming that kind of arrow to the north as well, which I mentioned, showing progression and forward-thinking and not just, but you could also see other things in there. Some people can see a sailboat in there. So there are different meanings for different people within it. So that's what the goal was with that.
Modern art.
Mr. Oglesby, I thought maybe you wanted to speak.
Yes, I was just going to say that even though we are the bicentennial commission, we do want input from everybody in the city to assist us with this endeavor that we have in 2018. So we're not ruling out any segments of the community, any people or anything like that. So if anybody wants to give us their ideas or anything like that, they certainly can contact me and Dr. Siemens and Mr. Miller over here, or anyone else for that matter on the commission. So we look forward to everybody's input.
Thank you.
Anything further from the bicentennial commission or any commissioners on this topic? All right, well, thank you all for joining us this evening. You may always come and go as you wish, Mr. Oglesby. Okay, commissioners, we need to accept the communications that we received from staff regarding the various pieces of legislation. I wonder if someone might care to make a motion to that effect.
So move. Second.
There's been a motion at second discussion. A lot of objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, item number one is an ordinance amending Part I Administrative Code Title VII Boards and Commissions, Chapter 165 Recreation Board of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky in the manner and ways specifically set forth herein below.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for this adoption of this ordinance at first reading.
Second.
There's been a motion at second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
We have eight members on the, I'm the liaison for the rec board, and we have to, as like the finance committee and other committees that we have, and I understand, some of the committees, you got to be residents, but I had brought this up, that we can look bigger than Sandusky. A lot of people outside of Perkins Ave or outside of Sandusky use our parks, use our, and very interested and helpful. And I think we have to look at Sandusky as a community and look bigger, you know, outside of just the boundaries of this community.
Further questions or comments? I couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Waddington. We have a lot of stakeholders in this community, people who have businesses here, who work here. You know, the Kickbog League that we had this fall was so successful, it wasn't limited to Sandusky residents. That works because we had enough people participating, and we had a critical mass, and that's something that cities have to offer. So I think that's the right attitude, and as we move forward with a more comprehensive look at our boards and commissions, I hope that's something provisional, we'll include in more and more of that. Unless there are further comments, Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance passes on first reading. Item number two, please.
Item number two is an ordinance declaring that certain real property owned by the city as part of the land utilization program identified as parcel number 57-02778.000, located at 1134 Fifth Street, is no longer needed for any municipal purpose, and authorizing the execution of purchase and sale agreements with respect to that real property, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion at second discussion. I don't know that it requires a lot of explanation, but this is one more successful example of the city's mode-owned program and taking an unbuiltable lot, splitting it between the two neighbors, thereby creating some additional space, green space, and taking property that's not on the tax rolls back into the tax rolls. And it's been a great program, and we'll just keep plugging away. Unless there are further questions or comments, Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion first, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
the city's mode-owned program and taking an unbuildable lot, splitting it between the two neighbors, thereby creating some additional space, green space, and taking property that's not on the tax rolls back into the tax rolls and it's been a great program and we'll just keep plugging away. Unless there are further questions or comments, Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion first, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance declaring that certain real property owned by the city as part of the land utilization program identified as parcel number five seven dash zero one zero four zero dot zero 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 located on Cleveland Road is no longer needed for any municipal purpose and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement with respect to that real property and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. I don't know that it requires a lot of explanation, but this is one more successful example of the city's mode-owned program and taking an unbuildable lot, splitting it between the two neighbors, thereby creating some additional space, green space, and taking property that's not on the tax rolls back into the tax rolls and it's been a great program and we'll just keep plugging away. Unless there are further questions or comments, Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion first, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number four, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Item number four is a resolution approving and accepting certain real property for acquisition into the land utilization program and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Yes, item number five is an ordinance approving current replacement pages to the Sandusky Codified Ordinances for the period of January one, two thousand and fifteen through December thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. This one really is as boring as it seems, but it's important for us to have our ordinances out there for the public to be able to review and hold the city and the commissioners accountable and it's just an expense of doing business, so. Unless there are further questions or comments, Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Six, item number six.
Six, excuse me.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Tree Experts of Huron, Ohio for the two thousand and six tree removal project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Waddington.
I'm happy to read in our packets that forty-nine dead trees are going to come down. We're going to be trimming thirty, so that's good, good job. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thirty, yes.
Mr. Link, this is the same company that did such a really good job for us last fall of taking down all the trees and doing the work that it did, Tree Experts.
Yes, Tree Experts.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
You know, I've heard a lot of people ask about when their tree will be taken care of and I think me and Brad may have discussed this too, but is there a way of letting us know where that list is going to be at, where we're finished, we're completing, or going to get to what trees? Do we have a way of letting the public know that?
Sure, through you, Mr. President, Commissioner Lockhart. We are currently working on our two thousand and seventeen list, so if someone does have any questions, commissioners or the public, feel free to call our office and we can give you a list about where we're at. We use the soil and water study from a few years ago as kind of our basis of analysis and then we go out and between the greenhouse and Tom Spear and myself, we do the evaluations on the trees. So, we have a growing list and not only the list that we contracted out, but that we do in-house as well.
And is this inclusive of stumps that may be out?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay.
It's a growing list? It was a shrinking list?
Me too.
Well, the trees are growing until they come down.
I see, okay. So, it's a never-ending list?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I'm assuming, I guess I'm asking, the, essentially, we're working off the original list, the contractors are dealing with trees that were on the list that were presented to us from the tree commission, correct?
Yes.
So, that's catch-up, okay, which is why the list is growing because the rest of the trees kept growing, so, all right.
And some continue to die, so, they get worse.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item number seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase one two thousand and sixteen Ford utility police SUV through the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program from statewide Ford Lincoln of Vanwort, Ohio for the police department and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Chief Orzak, with this addition, what's the, what will the force's capacity be with all-wheel drive vehicles? Will this be the second one?
Yes, sir, this will be the second one.
And that had been an observed shortcoming that we had in terms of being able to respond and emerge in a situation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, this is progress. How many all-wheel vehicles would you prefer to have?
The whole fleet. Probably three would be ideal, I guess, as we move forward and Troy Vicaro does an outstanding job with the fleet maintenance and all that and we had purchased the one a year or so ago and wanted to see how it works and functions and it's doing a great job and also gives the officers that are a little bit larger more room. You know, some of the guys are six-five and they squeeze into them in pallets, so it's a different type of drive, but the vehicles are, have been very good and Troy gave the blessing to move forward with that, so.
Okay, thank you. Further comments, questions? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number eight, please.
Item number eight is a resolution approving the submission of a grant application to the Whitman Weber Foundation for the Recreation Department and if awarded, authorizing the city manager to execute any required agreements and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm delighted to see that we're doing the Lyons Park, Iron Park, Firewell and Foxborough Parks again and it's only three thousand. I think it's important, it runs from June twentieth to August fifth, I think that's important for our community to keep this.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number nine, please.
Item number nine is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amendment to agreement between the City of Sandusky and Dockside Hospitality LLC for services related to the management and use of the paper district marina and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second. There's been a motion and second discussion. Who can, who on staff can present this legislation to the commission and the public? I, it's a relatively more involved piece, Mr. Wilksir.
Through the commission, President of the commission and Director Lank will probably supplement me to a certain extent on this. We had a five-year agreement with Dockside at the onset of the opening of the marina and that was in large part because the Avalones had a vision for the concession facility that was beyond probably what the city had imagined and in addition to that, the city had had a hard time determining or identifying a partner for the day-to-day management of the marina. And while the Avalones need no introduction in their experience in running fantastic restaurants in the City of Sandusky, they were new to marina management, but they took that on for the opportunity, one, to help the city out so that the marina could go into effect and open, but also so that they had the opportunity to serve their food in such an iconic location as, you know, Sandusky Bay and that has worked out very well. But in that time, the Avalones have opened more restaurants and continue to open new properties and the marina has found its legs, I guess. I don't know if that's appropriate for a boat term or not, but the idea being is we wanted to take a look at revising the agreement that gave the city the certainty that Dockside, which has been a wonderful way to attract people to the marina and to the bayfront, could continue to operate beyond just the two years left of that agreement. So, this envisions a five-year lease with the option on behalf of Dockside to renew for an additional five years. It also, though, changes the compensation owed by Dockside to the city for the operation or the rent of the concession facility to go from one where they covered the cost of utilities and then ultimately any other rent was offset by their fee for management. They'll begin you to pay what was the imagined full rent at the time of that lease and then the city will look to and come back to the commission at a short-term meeting to issue an RFP. Actually, I don't believe we'll come back for legislation for that, people issue the RFP to find new marina management. So, we think that this is a win-win for everyone involved from the perspective that, again, a very successful restaurant, which has been an important part of establishing Sandusky's waterfront destination status over the last several years, we will know that they'll continue to grow in that space and ultimately to operate there for up to a decade and then we can then ultimately get some new revenue from the city through the changes there and[1444.25]
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whipser.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
Just making my quick comment. I've seen the Avalones run this establishment and others, and I think they do a great job of it. I'm glad to see that they're here today to represent their business. And just a quick question about the new contract and your experience there. If you could offer, you've been there for a few years, so you kind of know the kinks and ins and outs of it, but if you could offer the commission in just a few comments on your experience there operationally, and then going into the future, it looks like that you're looking to seek some improvements or changes down there. I don't know what that may or may not be, but could you give that up for us today?
If you wouldn't mind using the microphone, sir would appreciate it so the audience at home can hear as well. You just identify yourself.
Hello. Caesar Avalone, 50% member of Dockside Hospitality. To answer your question, Mr. Lockhart, we have found that we're, we have an opportunity to, to grow the concession stand in a way, it was a suggestion from the Health Department, to separate the beverage service from the food service. So our intention is to take the little concession area and bring the beverage counter outside while leaving the kitchen to be only food, and so there's no cross-contamination, things like that. It'll help alleviate some of the waiting times during our busiest, you know, during our highest capacity, and I think generally just give a more relaxed feel and all. And I have some drawings that I shared with Eric, and, and we're putting some numbers to those designs now, and we'll be sharing with that very soon.
Will you be able to offer those drawings up to us to see?
Absolutely, yeah.
Are you talking new construction of a building?
Yeah, it would be a, a masonry service counter. So if you're familiar with the property now, you have to belly up to the actual building. Now, there'll be a sort of line of defense, if you will, and, and a server that is there not as a kitchen worker, but is there as a forefront of customer service, and hopefully can navigate newcomers and help regulars get everything they need in a timely fashion. So, and then absolutely, the contract does state no further improvements can be made without the city manager's approval, so we'll go through that entire process.
Right. Okay, very good. Very good. I'm pretty satisfied. Also, I would like to add that they have the best lobster bisque in the entire state of Ohio, but Caesar knows that.
Commissioners, further questions or comments? I think it's a great arrangement. I think that we all, we each need to do what we do best, and I'd rather see both of you in the kitchen and behind a counter than on a, standing on a dock and trying to manage dockhands. I, I think it's great. And I don't tell you this because I don't think you need me to tell you this, but what you two have done as a couple to support entrepreneurialship in Sandusky has been without peer. You've been outstanding. I'm not gonna, I don't need to tell you that because I vote with my wallet. And it's great. Thank you for your investment in Sandusky. You've really been great partners to us. Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
Kind of to go off of what you said, you guys are one of the reasons that Ryan and I moved back, so thank you for all the, the hard work you guys put in. So, and I was excited to see that five-year extension option on the lease, so, thank you.
Anything else? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 10, please.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to file an application with the United States Environmental Protection Agency for financial assistance through the 2015 Great Lakes Shoreline Cities Green Infrastructure Grant for projects for Lyons Park, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady?
I'm going to ask Mr. Klein to give us a brief explanation of this opportunity, which is very similar to an opportunity that we were successful with a couple of years ago. These are long, painstaking processes to go through, but to obtain these, but we were successful, and I think that all by itself, we speak, still need to continue trying to do it.
Through you, Mr. President. As everybody's aware, the federal government is very active right now in making sure that the water quality in the Great Lakes is brought up to standard. We received notification a few months, about a month ago, month and a half ago, that they're putting about $175,000 towards projects related to beaches. So when we got that, the project was specific to Lyons Park Beach, Kiwanis Beach, and Cedar Point Beach, I believe, was the other one. And when we looked at that, we tried to figure out what we were going to be able to do within the infrastructure requirements laid out in that grant. Talked about porous pavement, talked about rain gardens, bioinfiltration, just different green infrastructure, things that we could possibly implement at these locations. So naturally, we went right to Lyons Park Beach, or Lyons Park, because there is a master plan there already. So we started looking at what improvements could be made, the next improvement for that infrastructure for Lyons Park. And, you know, when you go to a beach, a lot of people are going to drive there, so it seemed very natural that we were going to use the parking lot as the next project. So, similar to what we're doing at the Jackson Street parking lot, we're looking to get a 50-50 grant, $175,000. They'll match up to $175,000. Right now, cost estimates are coming in slightly over, but we're still looking at all our options. We have to get it in by the end of this week. So we're looking at what we might be able to do to get that $175,000 from them to do the, the parking lot at Lyons Park.
Mr. Klein, further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
The, the, and Aaron won't tell you this, but what he's gotten very good at is putting things like this together and designing the kinds of things that make us eligible for these kind of grants. It, it's not free money. It's a matching grant. So if we get the 175, we have to put 175 in, but what we're doing with these parcels of land are good, not just for the community, but they're good historically for the next generation. You'll end up with rain gardens and stormwater tree trenches and, you know, porous pavement, the kind of things that are really out there in hopefully all of our kids' and grandchildren's futures. So, Sandusky, for such a small community, has the opportunity to be on the cutting edge of, of this aspect of government, and this is a, this is one of those things that it's a lot more enticing than, say, grit tanks, isn't it?
One more thing I'd like to add. These processes do take quite a while, so I don't want anybody to get their hopes up that there, it's going to be resurfaced this year or redone this year. We will probably find out. I think the last grant we got for the Jackson Street parking lot took almost a year to find out, so I would anticipate not even being able to move forward with design until 2017. And at that time, we would certainly get the stakeholders involved, the people that were involved in the planning process previously for the Lyons Park plan, so it'll be an extensive process, similar to what we did with the Jackson Street parking lot.
Mr. Chairman.
Lockhart.
One comment or question to Mr. Klein. A lot of people get around in this city that are elderly or disabled by wheelchair or scooters or, or some device of such. Does this plan or can this plan to redo this include ADA accessibilities?
Through you, Mr. President. Every parking lot that we do, we're going to make sure that we have ADA accessibility. I mean, the bike path out there that's, that's currently existing, that's ADA accessible. I mean, there's going to be handicap parking spots. We'll make sure that it's ADA accessible as we move forward with any of these.
Right, because as we sit now, there are some ADA issues with the benches being on the grass and not being paved, which you probably are aware of, so I wanted to see if that was going to be included in this upgrade.
At this time, through you, Mr. President, at this time, we would not include that into it, but I know we've had discussions with public services about possibly being able to go out and make those benches handicap accessible. We were made aware of that. There is a grass space between the, the bike path and the benches that were installed last year, and we, we know that we need to fix that. We know that we need to get out there. So I don't know if that's in the works this year, or if it's going to be coming down the road, but we are aware that we will make sure that that happens.
And if I could, through the president, to Commissioner Lockhart, Lyons Park is one of the parks that we identified last year, the other being Shoreline Park, for the completion of the city's first handicap-accessible playground equipment. So I know they installed, I believe, a swing and other playground equipment that was handicap-accessible at Lyons Park, so we are doing our best to be very cognizant of, as we have opportunities to make improvements to, to make sure that they're ADA accessible.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Poole.
The Lyons, Lyons Park project is one that we've actually already designed and have already committed, committed ourselves in the money to, to actually do it. So I'm really glad that the engineering department and really the staff has put us in a position where we're able to get these kinds of grants. I actually see this as simply $175,000 that we're not going to have to pay, that we already committed to, to do that, and I do, and I assume that this is, we're going to get the project that we promised the public, the parking lot. We'll follow the design that we already approved. Is that your plan? It is very specific, and this is what we promised the premier park.
Through you, Mr. President. The, that's the full intention at this time. Obviously, we're going to have to look at the costs and look at everything else. Preliminary cost estimates are extremely high, so we're trying to figure out if there are items that we might not need. Things like thicker pavement to handle fire trucks, things like that. We don't need that necessarily. So we're trying to figure out the best ways to reduce the cost on the project, and we're obviously going to do whatever we can to make sure that we're within a budget. But yes, the intent right now is to match exactly what's in that plan, so we'll, we'll, we'll be looking at it over the next month or couple of years.
And if I could, through the commission president, also to Commissioner Poole, that is exactly the reason why we chose Lyons Park for this, because of all the projects identified in the bicentennial vision or the comprehensive master plan, that was the one that was both prioritized in that plan and also had an existing adopted master plan. And that's exactly also why we look to introduce the five-year capital improvement plan to later this year, is that so we can begin to take other prioritized projects to that master planned level, so that as resources become available, we can start checking projects off the list.
Further questions or comments? Some of these great projects to come back to. I had that gap period where I wandered off to another city for a while, but this was, this was completed in the interim. Mr. Waddington, Mr. Poole, we were both on the commission at the time, and Mr. Brady, you may have been as well, and you're all to be congratulated for a really good work, as well as the staff, of course, who did the real work, putting together what is just a gorgeous plan. And I, I'm very excited about the possibility of seeing this, this come to fruition. Two things, Mr. Klein, what is the, I can't remember. I know that the porous pavement is more expensive, but I don't remember if it's 50% more expensive or, or what is the relative difference? Do you know offhand?
It's around 75% more expensive. It's, it's significant, but at this location, the porous pavement is not a good option for it. It swells down the side, so I wouldn't anticipate seeing porous pavement out here.
Oh, I see. Okay. We discharge the water on-site in a different way, is what we're going to do. Okay. And then I had another question. Oh, I know, I wanted to address. When I saw you had the, you had titled it Lyons Park Beach, and this comes up every so often because we all, you know, we all romanticize about the possibility of putting a beach there, and we'd love to put a beach there if the waters would allow the beach to stay there. We've had studies that I'm aware of in the last, oh, maybe 15 years, two engineering studies that looked at that, and the cost was billions of dollars to put in piers and then annual expenses of at least $100,000, maybe even a couple hundred thousand. I don't remember the numbers now, to replenish the sand, which would constantly wash away, even though you had the piers there. So I, I just wanted to mention that because occasionally do get excited about the possibility of a beach at Lyons Park, and it just, it just won't stay there if we put it there without a whole lot more money, so.
Mr. Chairman. I think we switched, in 2009, we developed a master plan for Lyons Park, and I followed it every month. I go out there, and even my four years I was off, it continued to progress. You know, I'm excited about it, but I think most of us, that's why we push for the splash pad to go out there and the playground equipment away from the water and have a natural beach. I think years ago, if you want to go in and swim, I think the water is fairly safe majority, you know, throughout the year.
I just meant sand. Yes, you're right.
Yeah, as far as, but I, I think it's going to remain a natural sand-type or, you know, stony-type beach. Get prepared. We're not going to rival to your point for sure, so.
Anything else? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number 11, please.
Item 11 is an ordinance approving the emergency work for the water main relocation at Cedar Point and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Haynes Construction of Norwalk, Ohio in relation thereto, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just add that I'm happy that we refined a less expensive way of doing this. I spoke with Mr. Klein about this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we are using PVC rather than steel, which is a tremendous saving of, what, $65,000 for the city. So I'd like to applaud Mr. Mr. Klein and his department on saving the city quite a bit of money.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm glad we're doing this since we've had several breaks over there going into Cedar Point. Every time this happens, and if it happens during the season, we lose revenue and taxes, and I can never, or the city can never recoup them back. Once the park closes, that's the end. And to lose a day or two is not worth it. I think for 274 or whatever the amount was, we're doing well.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 12, please.
Item 12 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Erie Blacktop Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the Caldwell Street Reconstruction Project Phase 1, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter. Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Just a question. In regard to this, the changes we're doing to it, some streets in the city last longer than others. The rebuild of this, is it going to be substantial in terms of the base, so it's going to last a while? Quite a while.
Through you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is a, a road that we are going to be bringing up to heavy standards, so that all the trucks, obviously with spore concrete down on the end, we want to make sure that, that we've got a very good loading for this road.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 13, please.
Item 13 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Premier Concrete of Norwalk, Ohio, for the Issue 8 Residential Demolition Project Number 1, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Ms. Bynington, I wonder if you might just take a moment to walk us through this piece of legislation and the next one. I mean, we've all read the materials, but maybe the folks at home will be a little bit interested in knowing about, a little bit more about the progress we're making in tearing down some of these abandoned properties, and kind of exciting, actually.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of commission. There are two items on the agenda in regard to entering into contract with Premier Concrete out of Norwalk, Ohio. The first agenda item involves the demolition of four properties. They are 2026 Tiffin Avenue, which is just a garage the residents will remain, 627 Decatur Street, 1001 Wayne Street, and 919 A Street. Premier Concrete was one of five that bid on the project, and they came in at $38,400. We're recommending that we enter into contract with them for that agenda item as well as the second. The first agenda item will be paid for out of community development capital project funds. The second agenda item will be paid for out of CDBG funds. The properties that would go through asbestos abatement and demolition for this contract are 2124 West Forest Drive, 2132 West Forest Drive, and 4112 Venice Road. Premier Concrete came in low out of five bidders on this project as well at $32,550. And any properties that are not owned by the city through the land bank program would have liens placed on the properties.
Thank you. Questions or comments on item number 13? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 14, please.
Item 14 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Premier Concrete of Norwalk, Ohio, for the CDBG fiscal year 2015 Residential Demolition Project Number 2, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter. Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number fifteen, please.
Item fifteen is an ordinance approving a substantial amendment to the city's fiscal year two thousand and fifteen one-year action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program Year of July one, two thousand and fifteen, through June thirty, two thousand and sixteen, and authorizing and directing the city manager to submit the amended action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Managers, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion? Ms. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number fifteen, please.
Item fifteen is an ordinance approving a substantial amendment to the city's fiscal year two thousand and fifteen one-year action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program Year of July one, two thousand and fifteen, through June thirty, two thousand and sixteen, and authorizing and directing the city manager to submit the amended action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Managers, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion?
Ms. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number sixteen, please.
Item number sixteen is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with City Architecture Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for professional services for a blight study and urban renewal plan, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Managers, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion? Mr. Chairman? For the time being, I am going to abstain on voting this. I don't know if I am or am not able to vote on this piece of legislation. The area in question is immediately across from my office, and it's not enough, this just came up on Friday, Thursday, and not enough time to get advice from the Ethics Commission as to whether I'm able to vote on this. So for the time being, tonight, I'm going to abstain on this.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
While I support conducting a slum and blight study, and I think it'll open up a lot of opportunity for our city, I will also be abstaining due to the fact that I own two properties within the mapped area and another property right against, right outside the mapped area.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I do not have a conflict, so I will be voting on this. I wonder if we could ask our city manager, Mr. Wolfster, to walk us through this and tell us exactly what's going on here?
Certainly, and Director Bynington has worked very closely on this, so actually it may be good for her to give a brief overview and then I can come in with some higher level remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission.
We're requesting legislation to enter into agreement with City Architecture for a blight study and an urban renewal plan. A blight study is required by the Ohio Revised Code to establish the urban renewal area. Currently, there is one existing urban renewal area which was created for the Paper District. The blight study will include parcel-by-parcel inspection of all properties within the study area. The study area, for those that do not have a map in front of them, will include properties on Shoreline between Jackson and Franklin, blocks between Shoreline, Washington, Columbus, and Wayne, and blocks between Eastwater and East Washington, Perry, and Franklin. In general, in order for the area to be eligible for designation of an urban renewal plan area, there must be a substantial amount of deteriorated or deteriorating structures, site or other improvements, diversity in ownership, tax delinquencies, et cetera, that hinder redevelopment of the properties. The purpose of urban renewal is to improve specific areas of a city that are poorly or underdeveloped. The plan will align with the goals of the newly adopted Comprehensive Plan and Strategic Plan, and could indicate things such as acquisition, demolition, removal of structures, redevelopment, public improvements, rehabilitation, proposed zoning changes and land uses, maximum densities, and building requirements for future redevelopment. The ultimate purpose is to make the area more appealing and conducive for economic investment. Urban renewal provides the following tools, which include use of tax increment financing to finance improvement projects, powers to buy and assemble sites for development and/or redevelopment, flexibility in working with private parties to complete development projects. Examples of projects that can occur in the planned area include construction or improvement of streets, utilities and other public uses, rehabilitation or conservation of existing buildings, acquisition and improvement of property and resale of property within the district. Prior to approval of an urban renewal plan, it must be approved by Planning Commission and City Commission, and during this process, there'll be public involvement and the affected parties, such as applicable taxing districts, would be consulted. The city issued an RFP directly to three consultants. The city only received two proposals back due to the specialized service or nature of this kind of work. The second quote or proposal came in at eighty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. We believe that City Architecture was able to give us a much better price for this work because they have spent nine-plus months within the city working on the Comprehensive Plan and have the existing data and mapping already completed. The cost will be paid for with Economic Development Capital Project Funds. At this time, staff is requesting that the legislation be adopted to enter into contract with City Architecture for a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars to complete these two, the study and the plan together. We're requesting that it be passed under Section fourteen so that we can expedite this process and have the tools available as early as possible for redevelopment. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
It was requested that the block involving East Market, Hancock, East Washington, and Franklin Street be included in this study. Just like to know why it ended up not in the final project?
As you know, when we met earlier, Commissioner Poole, you said you would like to see that in the area, and at that time, we discussed that we already had the proposals in. So that's why that was not included initially when the legislation was proposed. Since that time, we've talked in-house, and we have said, we've determined that if the contract moves forward, we could look to do a change order in the near future if City Commission still wanted to see that. So that is something that we can absolutely do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lockhart?
Seeing this, and I was concerned about this over the weekend, we just got this as emergency legislation, and as you may or may not know, most of you know that I don't like to get something on Thursday that needs a decision on Monday, and this is a very important decision as downtown definitely does need development. But I would have liked to have more input from the commission as to where this area would be designated. And also, in the map that you've provided us, I don't know if the general public can see this map somewhere, I don't know, is that available to the general public, Amanda, or, and if it is, I'd like to see where the existing area is, blight study is, and then how it connects to this, and why. Now, as I see it, it kind of winds down through downtown but does not encompass all of downtown. Is that correct?
That is correct. It does not encompass all of downtown.
And do we know why, or is it?
Through the commission president to Commissioner Lockhart, the area in question has to, in total, be predominantly slummed or blighted, I'm not sure the term of art for that, and therefore, we chose the area that we believed was predominantly slummed and blighted, that was also contiguous and comprehensive so as not to defeat the purpose of the legislation that allows these urban renewal districts to be created. So we did our best job looking at the, a portion of downtown that was contiguous to the Paper District Urban Renewal Plan, which is the portion that you mentioned that's been previously passed, and that took in as much of the rest of the core of downtown as possible, but that wouldn't, through the inclusion of properties that are in better shape, prohibit us from having a slum and blight district in downtown Sandusky.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I wonder, Mr. Wolfster, if you'd share with us, the concept here is, I believe the concept is, that by doing this blight study and having an urban renewal area, that we have an opportunity to find another stream of revenue to accomplish such things as infrastructure improvement.
Yes.
And now, if I take that, and I don't mean to speak for you, so I'll allow you to expound on this in a moment, but in my way of thinking, what that means is that for every, if this is at all successful somewhere downstream, we have dollars for more infrastructure improvement, and those dollars that we have gained through Issue Eight funding go somewhere other than downtown, meaning into the neighborhoods. That, so the ultimate goal here is to spread dollars into the neighborhoods. Am I correct?
Through the commission president to commission vice president Brady, that is an important part of this, and while we heard loud and clear from the commission and from our planning consultants, both in the Strategic Plan as well as the Comprehensive Plan, and even through media articles that I've sent on kind of revitalizing cities as recently as last week, is that downtown is a critical component to the revitalization of entire cities, not just the downtown portion of the city, and so that's a prioritized portion of the plan. We heard from this commission and others that we can't be focused exclusively on downtown. In fact, most of our residents live out of the neighborhoods, and that they wanted, to the extent possible, to ensure that we were spreading resources out into those neighborhoods to make Sandusky a better place to live. And so the very reason that we would look to create an urban renewal plan in downtown Sandusky, one of the major reasons, is so that, to the extent possible, general fund dollars can be spent outside of downtown, and that revenues necessary to build the infrastructure and to support projects downtown can be generated from downtown itself. Now, I wouldn't say exclusively that would be the case, but I would say the vast majority of the time, we would look to deploy general fund revenues out into the city. As we do, the vast majority of our revenues are providing services out in the city already, safety, fire, streets, et cetera, and that this gives us additional tools in the toolbox so that those very ambitious goals of the Comprehensive Plan or the bicentennial vision for downtown can be accomplished, and that much of the, particularly the infrastructure resources that we have made available through the passage of Issue Eight can be spent in Sandusky neighborhoods or on corridors that connect Sandusky neighborhoods to each other. The other thing that I think is important from a timing question is that it is a good thing that the slum and blighted condition of downtown Sandusky, we seem to be going in an upward trajectory, not in a downward trajectory, but ultimately, the longer we wait then to put tools like this in place, which leverage that public financing potentially, the greater potential is that the area that we could actually do this in gets smaller and smaller because of the continued development. So this provides us an opportunity to do the downtown portion of the plan without hurting the neighborhood portion of the plan, in fact, using the general fund money in the neighborhood portions of the plan. And it also, just to give a frame of reference, makes projects possible that wouldn't otherwise be possible. The best example is the Paper District Urban Renewal Plan itself. The Marina that the Avalones have been so successful at that you passed the ten-year renewal on their lease tonight would not have been possible without that urban renewal plan. The conversion of an empty warehouse at the Chesapeake would certainly not have been possible, or, most importantly, the public boardwalk that was built around that property to give the public even more access to Sandusky Bay and Lake Erie. We believe that this is an extension of that vibrancy, but we need the same tools in place for the rest of downtown that were put in place for the Paper District that made that progress possible.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lockhart?
To address where you're going with this, if I look at the map that you have existing for the downtown area, between Wayne Street and Franklin Street, those areas are excluded between Wayne, East Washington, and Eastwater. That section is excluded. So say we develop outside of those areas, then what is your plan to rehabilitate those areas?
Certainly, those areas would be treated just like the rest of the city, and there are many tools that we have that can be put into place in those portions of the city as well, but the things that Angie mentioned that would utilize public resources leveraged from development taking place downtown, for example, which is how the Chesapeake project went forward, and we're focused on the infrastructure improvements, property acquisition than any major gap financing, say, for example, the Fike Building might need eventually to be redeveloped. Those resources specifically would not be available, but the only reason that any of that property was excluded from this area is that we didn't believe it was feasible to pass a renewal plan, and, you know, we looked, we considered downtown comprehensively from Battery Park to the boat ramp, you know, north of Washington Row, I guess, and we put in as much of the plan into the area that we thought was feasible and legitimate based on the many, many criteria, and Angie and I spent a lot of time talking about what those criteria were, how you define it with the consultants and otherwise, and so we think that this is the most comprehensive area that we could do to extend this and still ensure that we are not stretching the definition of slummed and blighted.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
So, if we could just simplify this a little bit, basically, what we're trying to accomplish is do the slum and blight study, and I think some of the areas that were left out, I don't see a problem with it because some of those areas have already been improved, and money has already been spent on those buildings. Am I correct?
Sure.
Okay. And once the urban renewal plan goes into effect, that allows us to take funds from the other urban renewal plan and spend those in this area.
Through the commission president, potentially, that would be one option. It doesn't mean necessarily that that would happen, but it would be an option available. There is debt service for those funds currently applied to the projects that I mentioned that they helped to fund, but as that gets paid off, and if there is excess, an additional urban renewal area is eligible. And I do want to say there was one criteria that I remember now in talking with Commissioner Lockhart as to why things were drawn in or drawn out that we very purposefully did not include, and I think that gets to why some of the areas Commissioner Poole initially mentioned weren't included in this plan, is that there is a trauma or difficult situations in other communities. The one that I'm most familiar with is Lakewood, Ohio. When you try to pass urban renewal plans in areas that have predominantly single-family housing, creates a lot of fear that there would potentially be the use of eminent domain to remove people from their single-family homes. So one of the reasons that the original map was drawn in the way that it was, was to exclude as many single-family residences as possible so that it didn't create the sense that we were declaring someone's home slummed or blighted, and that we were going to come in and try to upscale the neighborhood, and I know that that was something that came up very early on in the process that we discussed. Now, the areas specifically that Commissioner Poole has asked us to bring in would not include single-family homes. What we're trying to do is to draw on some of the commercial sites in the southern edge of downtown, which we think is a good idea, but part of the reason that they probably weren't included in the beginning was, in addition to making sure that the area remained slummed and blighted, we didn't want single-family homes in the district. But yes, the answer, sorry, you asked a simple question, which I made even more.
That's why I'm trying to simplify it so everybody understands, but it's okay.
The idea would be that this, by having an urban renewal plan, certain funding sources, including revenue generated from existing urban renewal TIFs, could be expended in this area should the commission so choose at a later date, not tonight, to expand those resources into that area.
And if this isn't accomplished, we cannot use those funds.
Absolutely.
And would this, if we do accomplish this tonight, would that open us up for more grant
place in those parts of town that would create a yield of new revenue that would drive those projects, which is the very reason, if you, and you look at the bicentennial vision, we have so many priorities, and as Aaron and I are sitting down over the capital plan from the Lyons Park restoration to Venice Road Investments, to things on the East Side, things at Amvets and Sproul, we want to use the infrastructure dollars that the public made available through issue eight on projects in our neighborhoods. By using revenue generated from investments downtown, downtown, we can accomplish those goals, which makes that other investment possible. But it's, the reason we would do this here as opposed to another part of the city is we're not seeing that demand generated yet from the private investment in those areas that would create enough. So, for example, the Chesapeake TIF yields about $600,000 annually. There isn't a private investment taking place in those other parts of town yet that would yield that amount that could be put back in. But if we use resources like that on the downtown projects, that means that additional million dollars a year that's going in infrastructure can be spent at Lyons Park, at an Amvets Park, or other parts of the city.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
The block I outlined and asked to be included in that study is, contains a large, I believe, three-story commercial rental apartment complex, a grocery store which takes up pretty much parking lot from Washington Street all the way to Market Street, and a drive-through on the Franklin Street side, so it's not really a necessary...
Fortunately, I turned my mic off, but that's okay. I want to make the point, it's not a terrible pla, it's not a place that's filled with residential houses, so.
Through the commission president to Commissioner Poole, I agree completely. It is, it was that, and again, we just didn't put it in. After we had your feedback on that, we agreed it was a good place to put in. It's that the blocks that were shared with the buildings that you mentioned actually still include single-family housing on the southern edges of those blocks, and there aren't a lot of partial blocks that we put in there for simplicity purposes of drawing the map, but once we learned what your goals were, we agreed that they were good goals, and ultimately, we think a change order can accomplish putting the commercial portion of those blocks in while drawing out that 10 or 12 single-family homes on the north side of Washington Street that also share those blocks.
Further discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Epstein.
Ms. Lloyd?
Epstein.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Epstein.
Ms. Lloyd?
Epstein.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. Item number 17, please.
Item number 17 is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the 2016 Safe Routes to School Cost Reimbursement Program, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension rules of protocol of Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. I know this was a late addition to the agenda, and Mr. Wolfser called me on Friday morning to see if that would be okay, and I normally discourage this, Mr. Lockhart, for the same reasons you mentioned. I don't like surprises, I don't like changes to the agenda. It's one of these things that is so hard to balance. I mean, we're, we're, we're really fortunate that we've got a city going at 90 miles an hour. It sometimes means that some stuff catches us pretty quickly, and I really appreciate everyone adapting to that and allowing us to be put on the agenda. So, but I don't know who would explain that just a little bit, perhaps.
Ariel.
Ariel, would you like to explain it? Step to the podium.
And through the commission president, Ariel's been working, as you mentioned, the real-time nature of this, very, very hard to pull together an application on pretty short notice.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of commission. I apologize that we threw this on last minute. We've been working, trying to figure out what exactly we were going to apply for with this grant, came up pretty last minute for us. The city will be applying for the Safe Routes to School Grant to complete infrastructure projects near the Sandusky Middle School. We will be applying to complete projects that were listed in the approved 2013 Safe Routes to School Travel Plan. Applications are due March 4th. Earlier today, I did receive our engineer's cost estimate for the eight projects we plan to do. It's going to be $285,000. We can apply for up to $400,000 for infrastructure projects. There is no match required for this grant. It is a reimbursement program, however.
Thank you, Ms. Black. Questions or comments?
I think this is so terribly important that we take these steps, especially as the schools are still working on their transformation plan, trying to decide what the building configuration is going to be like at this point in time, and I've taken a look at what you're suggesting, and none of this would end up being upended by what the schools are planning to do. This would only supplement, complement what they're trying to do, so I appreciate you bringing this opportunity to our attention.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted, and that concludes our regular items of business, and we'll turn to the city manager's report. Mr. Wolfser, the floor is yours.
Thank you, commissioners. Good evening, everyone. Starting with new business, the events committee, Commissioner Lloyd from the City Commission and Recreation Superintendent Victoria Kerr have been in contact with several potential members of an events committee and are proud to say that all contacted and have gladly accepted the offer to serve on the committee. Committee members include Dave Taylor, Steve Ernst, Andrea Smith, Matt Earhart, Tony Schaefer, Commissioner Lloyd, as mentioned, Dave Beer, Matt Keach, Chris Parthmore, Chris Rankins, and Susan Sardar. That is a great mix of entities that do programming downtown. There are downtown residents there. There is a Sandusky Police Officer there. There are merchants, as well as restaurant and bar owners, so we think we have a really good mix of people who both impact events downtown or are impacted on events downtown to begin that work. In addition, I wanted to mention that I would request a motion to pay dues for our membership with the Erie County Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $371. I'd ask the commission to make a motion that we pay those dues to maintain our membership with the Erie County Chamber.
So moved.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Great, thank you. And then, wanted to invite the commission, as well as to the public, to an event at the Rotary Club taking place on March 10th at noon. We will be delivering a State of the City address and are excited to update the community on our progress and ultimately, set the stage for continued progress in 2016. Moving on to finance, staff members from the local government services division of the state auditor's office were on-site during the week of February 8th to begin fieldwork on the compilation of the 2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, affectionately known as CAFER. The next scheduled finance committee meeting is Friday, March 18th, 2016, at 7:45 a.m. We did get approval of the finance committee for the preliminary budget that ultimately will be going out to the commission by March 1st for consideration for the March 14th city commission meeting. Moving on to the public works department, the OWDA loan for grit and bar screen projects at the WWTP has been approved. Those are a few more acronyms than I'm aware of what the second one, I'm not aware of what the second one means, but Aaron could confirm that wastewater treatment plant, okay. We'll immediately, I'll remember that in the future. We'll immediately perform a draw for work completed for both projects. Moving on to community development, there was an announcement at the federal level of a pretty significant shot of funding for hard-hit homes that would flow to county landbanks. It was worked on very hard by both Ohio Senators, Rob Portman, as well as Sherrod Brown, and the entity, the Thriving Cities Arm of the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, which helped Erie County establish its landbank, was very important in the advocacy of that. That will create a much more significant funding from the federal government to local governments to address abandoned homes. As you know, we did a survey with the Western Reserve Land Conservancy's Thriving Communities Institute in late 2014, early 2015, to survey the condition of every home in Sandusky, and we're in talks with the Erie County Landbank currently about how we can partner with them to ensure that they have the capacity to deliver on what will be a really significant amount of funding with deadlines attached for how we can deploy it to demolish beyond-repair homes in the city of Sandusky. So stay tuned on that, but we feel really good, and there was a lot of important work done at the federal level to make sure these funds can come back to communities like Sandusky, and we thank all of our congressional delegation. Also, the city is currently undertaking Phase One environmental site assessment work at 707 Warren Street as part of its 45-day due diligence period. Work is being completed by Emerald Environmental of Kent, and will be received in a few weeks. The former Sunoco property at the corner of Tiffin and Venice, I believe, the city's application to the Department of Commerce to classify the former Sunoco station as a Class C abandoned site is submitted and currently under review. The city is also in the process of updating a Phase One assessment and completing limited soil testing. These steps are prerequisites for any municipality hoping to secure funding through the abandoned gas station cleanup fund administered through the Ohio Development Services Agency. Staff hopes to approach commission in the upcoming weeks for permission to apply for funding through this program. Also, CDBG projects, the program year 2016, public participation will begin at the end of February. There will be a consolidated plan advisory committee meeting February 26, and the first public hearing will be held at your next city commission meeting on March 14. Subrecipient funding applications will be available as of today and will be due back to the city by March 21st. Sandusky Transit, an update, ridership was down 7% led by an 18% decrease in our demand-response ridership. We expect ridership to remain down until the redesign of our fixed route system this summer, like transit systems around the country, lower fuel prices and lower unemployment, reduced demand for transit if it is inconvenient to use, making our system more approachable and convenient is the goal of the system redesign. Also, though, we know that we are trying to, through rate increases, improving fixed routes, et cetera, we want to move riders from the demand-response to the fixed route system. I know Marvin talks about the cost of us to provide demand-response, it's something like $23 per ride, it is something like $3 or $4 per ride in the fixed route, so it is much more efficiently if, over time, demand-response goes down and fixed route ridership goes up. And then finally, public services and recreation. Over the month of February, we have used 144 tons of salt and 960 gallons of brine. To date, we have used 400 tons of salt. That concludes my remarks for this evening.
Mr. Wolfser, questions or comments for the city manager?
At one point, I just wanted to make sure that the commission was aware, because a couple of us were present for the budget meeting, as Lloyd was, Mr. Brady was, I wanted to make sure I understood what this, everyone understood what the scope of the finance committee's preliminary approval was. They don't delve into a department-by-department level. They are looking at what is our overall level of spending, what is our overall level of revenues, and what are our reserves, and that's what they were considering at that meeting.
Yes, through the commission president to the commission, so we have that high-level approval. We've been working individually with each department to look at their staffing, needs, project needs, et cetera, and that's why Hank and I are kind of finalizing those numbers and also preparing a narrative document for you that we intend, again, to have you at least two weeks in advance of your next meeting to review, that clearly explains any operational project or staff priorities that are different in this year's budget as compared to last year's budget.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Could you bring about the business roundtable? We have a date now, anyway.
Yep, absolutely. I believe Director Alaska, the March 16th.
16.
March 16th, at the Sandusky Fire Station at noon. Commissioner Waddington had the great idea of bringing back the business roundtable, and the economic development staff, as well as Clerk Cresser, have been working with him and a few other commissioners to bring that event back at noon. It will be an opportunity to bring together leaders from the business community, interested citizens, with staff from the city, staff from partner organizations that focus on economic development, and city commissioners, so that they're aware of programs and priorities that exist for their businesses, and most importantly, so that we can listen to their needs or challenges that they're facing. We think it's a great idea and really look forward. We hope that people will be there. Matt, can you, once again, it's the March?
March 16th.
March 16th at noon at the Sandusky Fire Station downtown.
Further questions or comments? We turn to items, then, of old business. Anyone having any items of old business? New business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I'd like to make a motion for an executive session for the sale of real estate.
Second. You should have just said that, didn't you?
Second.
Comes with age.
Groundhog's Day.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That executive session is set. Mrs. Cresser, would you remind me, there was a reference to a CDBG hearing that would be held at our next meeting. Did we set that already?
Yes.
Okay.
You set that at the last meeting, Mr. Murray.
Oh, I just couldn't remember for certain. And then, Mr. Soloway, we had talked about the possibility of having the budget hearing at our first meeting in March, so we should set that as well tonight, should we not?
I would not get set, yeah.
Okay, well, so that is now set for the first meeting in March, March 14th, we'll have the budget hearing, and we, let's talk about timing on that for a minute. Mr. Soloway, if I remember correctly, per the charter, we have to have that finished by the end of March.
Correct, so we either do a Section 14 on the 14th, or we do two readings, do a first reading on the 14th, and then pass it as a Section 14 in the second meeting, which would be the 28th, so.
Okay.
Well, whatever your pleasure.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner, any thoughts on that? I don't know if it's an advantage to the staff to get it finished early so that we can, you can move on to implementation. That seems to make some sense to me. Mr. Poole?
Mr. Chairman, what makes sense to me about the budget is, as you've said, the budget committee deals with a big portion, as long as we schedule and talk about the details in the departments, it'll be fine, whatever, whenever we bring it in.
Okay.
All right, well, let's plan to consider that for the first time on the 14th, and then we'll see what the pleasure of the commission is at that meeting in terms of whether we do it with Section 13 or 14.
Okay.
Any other items of new business? If not, then we will turn to audience participation. Anyone having any issues to address with the city? Please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share us, share with us your thoughts this evening.
Where do you, oh, okay. I don't trust these mics. Something came up in the meeting on dockside, they're going to build something. Can somebody elaborate on that, and who's paying for all of that?
So, through the commission president to Mrs. Johnson, that's all very preliminary, actually. I know Brad had a chance to see the site plans. I had a chance, I think it was late last week, to see the site plans, so we're looking at the layout, make sure it's consistent, that it works for the city. Ultimately, any expenditure that we would make above $10,000 would have to be approved by this commission. My understanding is that the Avalones are looking to make that investment themselves, but may apply for issue eight small business funding for a small portion to offset their costs. All that is to be determined, including the feasibility of it, but at least preliminary, Brad and Victoria, who oversee that property, and then myself, were excited by their planned investment, but we're still very much in a due diligence phase as to how that will go forward.
Is this going to be a very big building, or it's just a little refreshment stand building, or what?
Through the commission president to Mrs. Johnson, it's not a new building, it's actually a wrapping, external masonry, or almost like, it looks like a bar, because right now, they both take your order in the concession area and cook. That's a very tight space, so what this will allow them to do is to take the internal concessions currently, make that the kitchen, and then ultimately, the people who are taking the orders will stand between the current entryway and the new masonry structure. So it's a standing structure directly adjacent to the existing structure. But it's just, it's just like a, you know, a bar-type area.
And so Caesar will be picking up that, that expense?
That's our belief, girl.
But that's a permanent, that will stay, if he leaves five years from now, that stays, or, you know?
It, we'd have to look at all that. It depends on how he would construct it, and we can come back with more, like I said, I was made aware of this in the last five minutes of a meeting on the lease situation, and so we have a lot of questions. We're excited about it, but we haven't gotten into cost of construction, whether the permanent improvements, or whether they're removable fixtures, but we'll take a look at all that and certainly get feedback from the commission before anything moves forward.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?